Hi, I'm Kirk Scott with Scotty's True Value in Rigby, Idaho. An informed voter is a good voter. We have sponsored this debate so Jefferson County voters can be more well-informed. So please tune in.
Hello, I'm Nate Eaton with EastIdahoNews.com. Welcome to our Jefferson County Political Town Hall meeting. This event is sponsored by Scotty's True Value. We're joined tonight with the studio audience here at Harwood Elementary School in Rigby. Our conversation tonight is with four men who are running for the third District Jefferson County Commissioner seat. We have Ken Hall, Fred Martinez, Richard Savage, and Roger Young. Each of you will have 60 seconds for an opening statement. We will then have five questions where you will get 90 seconds to respond to those questions. We then have questions that we will take from our audience. You will then get 60 seconds for a closing statement. We will begin with those opening statements. Mr. Hall, we will start with you, followed by Mr. Young.
Thanks Nate. Hey, I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm grateful for this opportunity for people in the community to be able to get to know me a little better. I currently live in Territon. I was raised north of Rigby in Anis and went to schools here in Rigby and graduated from Rigby High School. I've had several people who encouraged me to run for this office. I've never been in politics before. I'm pretty vocal about politics and now maybe that'll come back to haunt me some. But I feel it's important that we elect someone who is qualified to be a commissioner and to carry on some big responsibilities that county commissioners have in forming regulation, making laws that govern the people. And I'm concerned that the representation in this county is fair from the west side to the east side.
Mr. Hall, thank you. Mr. Young?
Like Ken said, I'm honored to be here with such an august group of people and candidates. And I'm relatively the new people, a new person here in the community. I've been here for almost 11 years now. We've moved my family here. And I'm just trying to give back to the community that's given me so much in just such a short period of time. There are some growth issues that are coming in the county and some really tremendous things that are exciting about some of the things that we're going past and going forward here in the community. And I have a tremendous amount of a very wide experience, like Ken was saying, that qualifications and experience help qualify an individual for it. And I've done a variety of things. I've been an educator, I'm a businessman, I've done a whole lot of different things. I've been accounting and tax planning and financial planning. And so I'm here that perhaps I can give back to the community. Thanks Nate.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, I appreciate this opportunity and East Idaho News organizing this for us. For the past month, well actually when they first had us file for candidacy to run for Commissioner, I got my name in there and as soon as they said go, I was out putting my signs up. I want to make sure that everybody sees my name and knows who I am. And I come from Latino background. I was born in Mexico. At five years old, my mother brought me here to Idaho and have lived here ever since. And so I've grown up in this area, learned to appreciate the good people around us. You know, Scott Hancock mentioned that we live in a great community and we do. We live in an excellent community. We come together when we need to come together. And I have a lot to give and ready for it.
Thank you. Mr. Savage?
Well, I would like to say thank you too for the opportunity. I am a lifetime resident of Jefferson County. Third generation on both sides of my family to live in the county, so we have been here a while. I've been heavily involved for several years on natural resource issues. We took a long look at how my experience could help Jefferson County with the issues that I've worked on and felt like that with possible major regulations and water issues and land use issues that maybe my experience could be useful for the county. And so we made that decision to jump in and see if we could help out, so.
All right. Our first question, Mr. Savage, we'll start with you and then Mr. Martinez. What is your top priority should you be elected?
Well, you know, my top priority would be to continue with the... I think that the affairs of the county have been managed well in the last few years and I think that we want to continue down that path as well as preparing for any rain clouds that we could see down the road. As I've said, there's regulatory issues for natural resource issues as well as the issues I think that I see in the more urban part of Jefferson County that of, you know, crime, drug issues, things like that that I think that we need to address. There's always going to be a lot of things that we need to work on and I'm not a prophet. I can't see all those issues out there, but I think that there are several issues that will come along that can definitely have a big impact on the... Especially where I come from on the west end of the county, especially for those people out there that affect their ability to carry on their work and business.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, then Mr. Young.
You know, priority for me coming in as Commissioner, because I was taught by my father some very good conservative values growing up and knowing the things that have happened in the past, I want to come in making sure that we're accountable for every tax dollar that's being spent. I feel like we need to bring back the trust of the people, let them know, and that goes back to being transparent. We need to let the citizen know exactly where the money's going, how it's being spent. We've got to spend ethically, we've got to spend smart, and I'll get that done.
Mr. Young?
Well, there are a couple of big issues that the county is facing and one of them will be that we're going to experience some tremendous growth. You know, Idaho's the 10th fastest growing state in the country and Jefferson County's the third fastest growing county per capita in the state. And over the last 20 years, we've almost doubled in population and yet some of our infrastructure has not kept pace. Some of those roads out there haven't been changed and really upgraded since they were actually done by horse-drawn scrapers. And so that's one of the big issues is to manage the monies so in a transparent way as Fred was just talking about, so that we can get some of that infrastructure that's starting to fall apart. And if we don't take care of it now with the growth that we're looking at, perhaps doubling within the next 10 years, then we're going to have some major problems that we will not have solved. But if we take care of them and solve them now, then we can prepare for those kind of things. And that's one of the big issues. The other one is some of the water and issues and water and land issues that the... Well, we're fighting with the federal government over. I mean, they've already just taken some of the land out there in the west Jefferson County from where Ken and Richard are from. And that's going to be a major, major issue in the near future and we need to start working with other counties and see if there's a way we can either slow it down or stop it altogether.
All right. And Mr. Hall, your top priority should you be elected office?
My major concerns have already been stated, but I'll state them again. Regulations are holding us back. And if we could, through the county commission, continue to strive to not regulate our citizens to where they can't pursue their goals and they have in their life, whether it be business or family. Also, water is a big thing and being from Mud Lake, if we don't have good snowpack, we are going to be seriously crippled and our income is going to be hurt in this county. Because if we get cut back more than we are this year, you're going to see drastic cuts in the income that our farmers are going to have, not only out there, but it's eventually going to affect the farmers on this side of the county also. So those are major concerns that I have and I will work as county commissioner to do what we can on county level to help mitigate those problems.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, we'll start with you on our second question, followed by Mr. Young. District 3 is the largest commissioned district in Jefferson County. What will you do to make sure those living in your district feel represented fairly?
Well, I just barely started my candidacy and I'm getting calls already wanting me to do this or do that. And I keep telling people, first you've got to vote for me for the primary and then I won't be... Then whoever wins it out of us for is not going to get elected till November and we don't take office till January, so please call the other commissioners first that's here. But we have major concerns on the west side. We have concerns with roads, we have concerns with the police, policing that we have on. We have no deputies that live on our side of the county. And if something would happen in our schools, the closest one would be at least 30 to 40 minutes away. So that's a concern in our school district out there. And I just want it to be equal from the east side to the west side and that will be my goals.
Mr. Young?
Well, one of the issues is that we want representation from everywhere, you know, from east Jefferson to, you know, out by Ryrie, out to, you know, to Territon. And so one of the proposals I would think that we should be considering is to have the commissioner meetings itself, maybe once or twice a year, every once in a while, have it out there in Territon, have it out there in Mud Lake, have it out there in Ryrie, even have it at night. We've talked about transparency and yet, you know, transparency, well, the meetings are open, all the ones that can be opened are open, but why not have it at night when people who are working and trying to make a living during the day can come maybe at night and actually participate? The budget process needs to be a little bit more transparent, a little bit more input from the people around the community. But those are some of the issues that I would think are ways to solve the problem that you suggested there.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes, you know, in the past, actually a few years, it's been a five-year goal of mine to run for Commissioner. In the past three years, I've been preparing myself for this and I have been talking to people on the west side because of things that have happened in the past, well, especially last year, trying to secede from the county, there was a lot of concerns. And so I made a point to talk to a lot of people and being on the CRC Committee with Sheriff Anderson, I've come to find out that they are putting extra effort in patrolling out there and he has been doing a good job of that. So there's progress. They are making progress and we're getting closer to put more attention out there. I know that the west side puts in about 14% of the tax base for the county and last year I know that they received about 32% back. Being on the road and bridge, employed by the road and bridge, the past year I've come to find that there's roads out there that need to be taken care of, maintained, those that are paved. And hopefully we can continue in that direction and do that. And so I do plan on meeting with the people once a month, at least showing up, hearing their concerns or questions and then bringing them and reporting.
All right. And Mr. Savage?
You know, it's a good question, how do we keep it fair and equal? It's pretty hard. I think that Mr. Martinez brought up a good point there in the amount of tax dollars that comes in from the west side in relationship to the road. You know, it's a long ways to anywhere when you cross the river. And so there is that factor in there and it can seem a little unbalanced maybe, but it's important to remember that that country out there is a great play place for a lot of people too. So I mean, there's, you know, on a sunny day, we see a lot of people out there hunting horns or whatnot, so. But as far as representation out there, I think that it's vital to be involved. There are issues out there on the west side of the county that potentially are huge. We have a lot of important sagegrass habitat out there. We have the water issues that Ken mentioned and these are huge issues to be out front of. We have a huge issue in the waters of U.S. EPA's look to grab control over those issues there. So I mean, those are things that I've been heavily involved in and I think that I can continue to represent those people out there and serve their needs.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, we'll start with you on this next question, followed by Mr. Martinez. A few of you have mentioned transparency. A lot of people are asking for more transparency on all levels of government. Are the current commissioners completely transparent and what are your plans to be more transparent should you be elected?
You know, that's an issue obviously that's, I think, really has touched a nerve and especially over in this area. It's not something that I've been heavily involved in, so that's not something that's been one of my goals either. As I see the direction the county has taken, I think that those issues obviously have been addressed and they've been investigated and covered. And I just hope that we're at a position now that we can move forward in a productive and efficient way to address the needs of the county and that would be my goal. I think that as Commissioner Hancock has pointed out, they've addressed the issues that have been brought up and raised and I think that we continue to address those issues. You have to continue to listen to the constituents, to their concerns, and address those as they come along. But I think, you know, we have laws in Idaho that tell us how we need to run meetings and how we need to run business of the county. And I think that would be my main goal is to just follow those laws and make sure that we're letting the people know what's going on and giving them their chance to come in and see what it is.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez and then Mr. Young.
You know, I've thought a lot of what I want to do is trying to be transparent. And one of the things that I want to do is going in is suggest to the commissioners to go to an open-mic session. Instead of having two meetings a month, go to it once a week. And in one of those weeks, having an open-mic session for the citizens to come in and be able to give us their concerns, their questions and things like that. I know that, you know, there's been times where in the past that there's been executive meetings that shouldn't have been executive meetings. We have to know that line where we can have an executive meeting and that we shouldn't. We shouldn't lock the citizens out of decisions that are made with their tax dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Young and then Mr. Hall.
Well, one of the ways to have, you know, as I've been attending commissioner meetings over the last few months, I've been impressed about how open they are. I mean, any open session is open for anybody who walks in. There have been people walking in and walking out and it's been, I'm surprised, there haven't been more citizens there and part of that. And I think part of the problem is that it's during the day when most people are working. And so one of my suggestions, as I mentioned before, was to move at least an open session at night and then have it in different locations, out in Mud Lake and Ryrie and other places along this line, so they can, you know, feel a part of the process on that. I think Commissioner Hancock and Commissioner Raymond and Commissioner Farnsworth have been doing an outstanding job over the last year or so as they've been trying to make it more transparent, trying to open up. And as Mr. Savage has mentioned, they are prescribed, this has to be a closed meeting, executive session if they're talking about personnel or welfare recipients or things along this line. And so those are things, issues that we can't get around because that's the state law. All right? But for those times that we can be open, I think we need to be open and maybe move it to, I don't know, about once a week. That seems to, because we have to pay the employees to come there, that's a budgetary expense and I'm kind of a fiscal conservative. And so I think, but if we could have the commissioner part, maybe Colleen, the county come at night to a couple of times a year to different locations, I think that could make it a little bit more transparent and involve the people a little bit more.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I feel that in the last year or so, the commissioners have been a lot more open and transparent than it has been in the past. And I feel good about how they've responded to our concerns on the west side. We've had a lot of meetings out there, a lot of citizens got together and it wasn't a revolt, it wasn't a succession, it was, we have concerns and no one is listening to us. We've made phone calls, we've sent emails, and no one is answering us. So those concerns, I think it's getting a lot better and I want to continue that so that every citizen has an opportunity to be able to voice his concerns. My cellphone will be available as your commissioner. I will return phone calls. And that's the biggest complaint I hear from citizens is, there's no way we can get a hold of them, they don't... My name must not be important enough, my needs not important to the county, I guess, so they don't want to return my calls. And that's important and as your commissioner, that's what I'm going to strive to do is be open and honest with every citizen and their needs.
By a show of hands, how many of you have attended a commissioner's meeting within the past year? We'll start with you, Mr. Hall. A lot of people don't attend these meetings unless there's a hot-button issue. Often it's a reporter from the Jefferson Star, the commissioners, the clerk, and the attorney. What will you do to increase involvement in city government and how do you plan to reach out to those constituents to get them more involved?
Well, I just think we need to be open. We need to have what's going to be on the agenda. I think that through social media, Facebook, whatever other form of media that we might have, that we could advertise, this is going to be on the board meetings deal, those who are concerned can come. And also just be, as a commissioner, being open to what people have to say and take their phone calls, return their emails, whatever it takes so that there's that openness and so that everyone knows that we're concerned about every citizen and the needs that they might have.
Mr. Young and then Mr. Martinez?
Oh Nate, I seem to be repeating myself on my suggestions of maybe more transparent, open meetings and having it in different locations so that the people get involved. And that's one of the big things, issues, is that people want to feel involved with the government. This is, we're serving the people, we're not here to govern per se, we're here to serve the people. And so we need to see how we can get them to be more involved with what's going on. I don't know if we need to publish the... I know the agendas, Colleen publishes the agenda all the time, so all of it's available, but maybe put it in the newspaper every once in a while and say, here's what's going on for people to look at, to be involved with. And so to try to get more involvement and get people's participation in. And that's, you know, people are always busy and that's a big deal is to try to get them there. And so as Ken suggested, they need to have phone calls and returned and things along this line. And I think our commissioners, I know, as I've been watching the commissioners over the last few months, they haven't returned any phone calls. I mean, it may be one, a couple of days, you know, a week, but they're involved more than that. And so it's a big deal to get that community involvement inside the commissions.
Mr. Martinez?
You know, I guess I have to repeat some of the things that both Ken Hall and Roger Young have said, that the tools are there to let people know what's going on. The social network, the Twitter, the Facebook and et cetera, emails and phone. I know that I've told a lot of the west side that, you know, my phone will be available. You will see me, you won't, you will never say, I don't know who my commissioner is. Okay, because they will know, they will see me, they will talk to me. My phone will also be available to them to call me at any time. One thing that I do want to make sure happens is that we have a lot of very good Latino people in our area and I want to start including them as well. Because I am bicultural, I just grew up with that and I am very involved in the Latino affairs in this county, I want to start giving them the opportunity to help make decisions, to give service, to be part of the community.
Mr. Savage?
That's a really, really good question. I was recently at a fire training and I've worked on the sagegrass issue now for about 16 years and they asked me to get up and take a minute on this fire training and the comment was, don't talk about sagegras. Sometimes some of the hugest issues that we have are issues that, you know, they're just, and I think a lot of it is just complexity, that people really aren't that excited about spending a lot of time and really it's, a lot of issues are often seen at what we would call the 20,000-foot level, meaning that we're just kind of seeing the big picture and not down into the details. And I think maybe that's part of the answer there is, can we communicate more of the details to people on these issues and as they become more familiar with what's really happening there, if, for instance, if people knew more about what it costs to maintain a road, what happens to it when the end gun runs on it, things like that, and what that does to the county's budget, then perhaps that is something that would make people want to become more involved in those issues.
All right. Our last question before we open it up to the audience, Mr. Savage, we'll start with you and then go to Mr. Martinez. Many county employees feel a disconnect between them and the commissioners. They say in many departments morale is low. What is your plan to make them feel that their voices are valuable, that they are appreciated, and that they are doing a good job?
Well, that's a comment that I'm not, I haven't been familiar with. I recognize how the county works and, I mean, you have your departments and your department heads and so those people work for those people and those people come in and they interface with the commissioners. So same reason that we have executive sessions in our meetings, you know, there's boundaries as far as who can communicate what to who and... But, you know, on the broader sense, being able to communicate to the employees of the county, obviously, no matter what the infrastructure is and who's in between, then obviously the, everyone needs to feel that they are on the same team and that no matter who they are, their comments are very important. You know, I'm reminded of the situation I had years ago of a guy that used to work for us and we had this question, it's not important what, but, you know, this was a guy that was not highly thought of and in passing I asked this guy if he had any ideas about how to solve this issue. You know, just like that, he had, came up with the simplest, most efficient, because it was something that he worked with. And so we need to have that going on between everyone within the county, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez and then Mr. Young.
We all know what has happened in the past, you know, especially last year with the things that happened with the sheriff, ex-sheriff Olson and Ruggn and the recall and there were times then that, you know, the commissioners didn't want to be available, that there was times that they closed the community out and they were, the community, the citizens weren't able to ask the questions that they needed to ask. And so now, since that's happened, we've, I have seen a progress. You know, I think it was Ken Hall that mentioned that things are getting better, they're being more transparent. And I can say that, that they are, they're being more transparent. And I think that we just need to keep on nurturing this and learn off of what has happened so we don't repeat it again. I don't think we need to start sowing mud and saying so-and-so did this and so-and-so did that and bring it back to life, but I think we need to say, hey, what can we do to not let this happen again? We need to keep going forward, make things happen. I know being, again, as the CRC Committee, I've talked to the officers in our, in the Sheriff's Department and the morale is incredible to what it used to be. It is great and I commend the sheriff for that.
Mr. Young and then Mr. Hall?
Yeah, I dittle what Fred just said. The morale has improved greatly over the last year and, you know, whenever you have a large employee organization, which the county is, you know, I've managed and worked with over 300 people at a time and it's always a concern is employee morale out there. And so what you have to do is basically you need to spend some time out there and just say, hey guys, you know, and you bring donuts, you talk to them, you get to talk to them one-on-one and say, how's it going along this line? But at the same time, you can't short-circuit the, you know, the managers, for example. But at the same time, you can't short-circuit the, you know, the, your managers, for example. And so, you, often, when I was doing this, you'd take your manager with you and say, let's go talk to the guys and see what's going on, and say, hey, good work, and stuff along this line. And so, it's a tricky thing in a large organization to improve, you know, morale down to the lowest level. It takes a little bit of time, a little bit of effort, and, but, as Fred mentioned, the morale actually is greatly improved now that those, some of those legal issues have been taken care of in the past.
Mr. Hall?
I agree with what Roger just said about you can't take away the, or have your supervisors worry that you're superseding or going over their head when you're going to talk to the employees. It's a very important thing. But I think if the supervisors know that, as a commissioner, you want to know every employee's name, and I don't know about any of the rest of you, but I always like hearing my name when I'm the lowest guy in the room, or the lowest-paid person. And so, I think it's important that, as a commissioner, we know everyone's name who works for us, and that would be one of my first goals, is to get to know everyone that works for the county.
All righty. Well, we will now take a couple of questions, five or six from the audience here. We'll give you 60 seconds to answer these questions. Jill has the first question. Mr. Young, we'll start with you at the end. She says, what makes you different than the other candidates?
What makes me different from the other candidates? Well, I've had a large and variety of experiences. I worked for Novell and WordPerfect. I've done tax planning and financial planning. I manage the LDS churches, email and server systems throughout the entire world, by a count of 25,000 people. I've started my own business, I've been successful in some, in business adventures, and so, I have a wide and, a large variety of experience. I've been sued, I've had business partners who've cheated me, I've had partners who are my best friends after 35 years, et cetera, along this line. I've seen, you know, a lot of experience, a lot of different varieties, and so, that makes me a little difference, is I have a great, and large, varied experience that I can bring to the table.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I've had also similar experiences, maybe not to that extent, but I've had opportunities to, I've worked in a bank for three years, I've managed absentee owner farms for 14 years in Utah, Maryland, and Georgia. I've had opportunities to serve on water boards, I've served on the Idaho Dairy Products Commission for six years, two years of that as their chairman. I've had experience with, happened to have executive sessions, and I think that I know the requirements for that. I'm sure there's a lot more to learn, and so, with that, I guess that's my answer.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Savage, and then Mr. Martinez.
That's a good question. I tell my kids not to catch the disease I've got, I've lived out there all my lives, all my life, and ran cattle. Issues that have come along there that, you know, just briefly, you know, I remember when I was young, 20-something, that we lost a grazing permit on the Camas National Refuge out there, and that inspired me to get involved in issues, and so, I've been heavily involved in issues ever since then. But, you know, I see the resources of Jefferson County as being great, but the access to them is what I think is so important there, and I think, I don't know if it makes me different, but I think that's what probably makes me kind of what I am, is the fact that I've been so heavily involved in those things.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
So, what sets me apart, you know, for the past year, I've been with the Road and Bridge. I've been able to see the county from one end to the other. I know the needs of the infrastructure. I know that we're far behind on maintenance, on roads, bridges, culverts, and everything that comes into infrastructure. I know where we need to prioritize. On top of that, I feel, again, because I am bicultural, I understand both sides of the spectrum within our citizens that reside here in Jefferson County. I want to make everybody feel included. I want to include everybody because everybody is paying into the tax base, and I feel it's only fair to include everybody.
Mr. Martinez, we'll start with you with the next question from Sheriff Anderson. Your concern about law enforcement on the West Side as far as more coverage, how would you handle that issue when there is not funding, budgeted, or available? We'll start with you, and then we'll go to Mr. Savage.
You know, right now, I, just from being, again, I bring up the CRC. I know that the sheriff is doing an exceptional job, staying above budget. He's creating a revenue that wasn't there, I don't know when. I know that we haven't seen the Sheriff's Department be above budget for a long time. He's creating a base that he will be able to use that to hire another officer, and hopefully, that we can encourage some people to apply from out that direction, giving him the opportunity to be based in the West Jefferson side and patrol that area.
Mr. Savage?
Well, I'm always kind of grateful when I'm hurrying to a meeting that there isn't more of you out there, to be honest with you, but I think, I think it's important that we have that presence out there, and I think that Sheriff Anderson's done a good job, his short time in there, establishing good relationships there. I know that it's important, you know, the relationship they have with the school there, it may not be ideal, but as far as what we can do to increase that, that's a, I think, an intriguing question, which probably just takes a lot of work. Frankly, I don't have an answer for how we would improve that, other than can we be more efficient in one area that would allow us, outside of what Mr. Martinez has said, getting someone out there who wants the job. It's, I don't know if you can force people to live out there, so.
Mr. Hall?
I appreciate that question. I have seven grandkids in school, so their safety is important to me. And the schools in West Jefferson's been very open, and up until this year, you could walk in, say hi to the secretary, and go right to your kid's room. It's not a big deal. Now, we have, you got to punch in, get in, to get in, their secretary has to recognize you to get in. First, as little resistance that, a step back and thought, man, that's kind of important. But if somebody really did get in, who's going to protect? My wife, who's a schoolteacher there, all the other kids that's in that school, who's going to protect them? And if we're 40 minutes away, or 30 minutes away? So, that's a major concern to not only me, but other citizens that's out there. So, I just think it's something that, if you're going to skimp on some, it's not something we're going to skimp, I don't think safety's something that we can skimp on as far as budgetary money.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Well, I bet you Sheriff Anderson already has a couple of answers to that. But is there a possibility of, you know, part-time deputies out there? Besides just being able to, having more money, so we'd have to cut one place and put there, but, you know, security is a priority. And so, what do you do? Do you make everyone carry concealed permits? Do they, you know, train people out there? You train the assistant principals of the school to how to do that, teachers? And so, there's a lot of potential answers out there, but my guess is that Sheriff Anderson has a couple of ideas. Unfortunately, it'll probably take a little bit of extra money to find some places out there, which he's finding by himself. I think if he had some more funds available from the county, perhaps we don't need to have a new building for the, a couple of the departments, that maybe with that money could go to that area instead.
All right. This next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Young. Lindsay asks, and a few of you have brought this up, how do you feel about having time during each commissioners' meeting set aside for an open mic where citizens can ask questions or address issues? Mr. Young, then Mr. Hall?
Actually, they have that in process already now. They're, on every issue that is an open-mic session where, they go down there, is there anybody who wants to make a, any, a comment on this, you know, either for, or against, or neutral, or anything else like that? And I happened to be in one a couple weeks ago, where, you know, it happened to be an area that concerned me. I didn't know it was even there. So, I just said, hey, I got an input on that, so I, you know, popped in. And so, it's available, but most people don't know it's available, and so, that's one of the things, is to, you know, publicize it. Again, maybe Charlie or the newspaper to publicize the meetings, and these are outlined where this is the most important part of the meeting that people would be interested in.
Mr. Hall?
The county commissioner meetings I've been to, if I wasn't on the agenda, I didn't get to speak. So, maybe I need to pay a little more attention to that, but I haven't seen that openness, and I feel like that is needed, that we have an opportunity to voice our concerns.
Mr. Savage?
I think that I have no problem with the concept of that, as long as we're allowed to follow the open-meeting laws, then I don't see a problem with allowing people to have that time, whether that's something that needs to be allocated time for in the agenda, or, I think it's important that, though, that there are rules related to that. I mean, you know, when you're conducting the business, things like that, conduct needs to be of an appropriate manner, and things like that, and, like I say, you have to stay within, you know, that's why you have agenda, and that's why you try to stick with those, as people who are on an agenda can come in at a time, and things like that, so it couldn't get too out of hand, but I think it'd be great to allow people, you know, and it's a good idea for the commissioners to have that chance to listen.
And Mr. Martinez?
You know, I mentioned open mic earlier, and I feel strongly about that, so people, citizens can voice their opinion, voice their concerns and questions. You know, I think in the past, we've seen maybe some open-mic sessions, or the availability to ask questions, but I don't, I want to make sure that it's not done at our convenience. Okay? I want to make sure that the people know the set time, the set date, you're able to come in. First come, first served. We have to have a set time to do it, so we can take care of other businesses that, business that we have with the county. But it's not a convenient thing. We have to let the people know there will be an open mic.
We will take two more questions from the audience and then give you a closing statement. Mr. Martinez, we'll start with you. This is from Crystal. How do you view your relationship with other elected officials?
You know, I know Commissioner Raymond very well. We go to the same church building together. Church, you know, we're both LDS, and we see each other, pass by, and, you know, same with a lot of the officials that are in right now. I think as a community, we're such a small community, that we all know each other, and so, with that, coming in as commissioner, I want to continue that friendship, that openness, and cooperation, and efficacy that comes with being a commissioner. I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we don't come in with an agenda. I don't want to come in with an agenda and then have it make the, make tension within the commissioners.
Mr. Savage, followed by Mr. Hall.
I think I have a good relationship. I don't know how broad the question is. I'm proud to call Commissioner Raymond one of my very best friends, and I thank highly of him. I've, again, the issues I've worked on, our relationships with people in Jefferson County, in Boise, as well as in Washington, DC, so, the elected people that I've worked with, I think I have a pretty good open-door policy with them, and I'm able to get access and be able to discuss important issues with those people, so.
Mr. Hall?
I hope I have a good relationship with the others, the ones that are serving on the commission. After tonight, maybe I won't, but Commissioner Raymond and Commissioner Hancock, who I know more than Commissioner Farnsworth, you know, went to school with them, been friends pretty much all our lives with them, and have things in common with them, so I would say the relationship with them is good. I don't know Sheriff Anderson. I do know a couple of these Daffodils out in Mud Lake pretty good, and I know a lot of people that work in the courthouse, so.
Mr. Young?
Well, one of the neat things about this county is that we're still a relatively small county, and everybody, a lot of people know everybody. I mean, you know, Commissioner Raymond, and Hancock, and Farnsworth, I mean, is there anybody they don't know? It's, I've been impressed with, oh, yeah, I know, you know, and they walk in, and everybody seems to know them. And so, I have to tell you that I don't know a lot of elected officials, like Fred says. Fred and I go to the same ward, you know, LDS ward that Gerald does, and we're good friends. Fred and I are good friends. We've been friends for a couple of years, and so, you know, the officials, the elected officials that I know, I'm in good relationship with them.
All right. Mr. Young, we'll start with you on our last audience question, followed by Mr. Hall. This question comes from Sue. There is a lot of diversity in Jefferson County. How do you plan to bring the county together?
Well, I do speak Spanish. I get along, I have some of my closest friends who are of the Hispanic community, not like Fred, who speaks it fluently, you know, along this line, but, you know, there's some really good people all over the place. I mean, not only, you know, we talk about maybe diversity of Hispanic and Anglo, but from every walk of life, not necessarily, there's farmers, there's businessmen, there's a great variety of diversity, other than just cultural. And so, we need to, you know, my father was a farmer's son, and so, I appreciate, you know, and he's always trying to, when we were raised, always trying to get us to go back to the farm. And so, I can appreciate farming, I can appreciate business, I'm in small business, I can appreciate large businesses, I can, you know, do those kind of things. And so, all of that, to me, is a diversity, not just necessarily their cultural background.
Well, there's definitely differences in our county. This county's a melting pot. I mean, we are a bedroom community for Idle Falls and Rexburg, and so, I would hope that as our county continues to grow, and it will grow, because once people come here and realize how nice Jefferson County is, the openness we have, they will, you know, this county's going to grow, and that's where the growth is going to be. So, that's something that we've got to work on as commissioners, is how do we direct that so everybody feels included and has an opportunity to find happiness and success in raising their families here in this county?
Thank you. Mr. Savage, and then Mr. Martinez.
I don't know if I have any strengths, but if I do, that's probably one of my, like my record shows that I spent years in groups of great diversity. I have good relationships with people who are even borderline environmentalists, and I've worked with those people over the years on issues that are quite contentious, and been able to be very productive in those situations. And I find that the most important thing there is listening, listening to people and understanding what makes them tick, and seeing where you can find common ground to work on issues. And I think, you know, whether we're talking about issues that might stem from race, or from different views of how we might want to use our land, or things like that, I think that the ability to do that is important.
Mr. Martinez?
You know, I've thought a lot about how we're going to bring the community together and bring them to unification again, as we have in the past. I feel like we need to come together and be able to come up with ideas to bring the community together. And I do want to go in as commissioner and eventually bring a group together to come up with ideas that we can include everybody and be able to have ideas on how we can help better the community come together. As far as business in the county, I feel like because of my experience in my business, being in construction, I've been able to learn how to communicate well with a lot of different people. When I have tile business, and when you're talking about an $80,000, $60,000 project in Jackson, you want to make sure that it's done right and effectively, and comes out with a good finished product.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we will now give each of you 60 seconds for our closing statement. We will start with Mr. Martinez, followed by Mr. Savage, and then Mr. Hall, ending with Mr. Young. with Mr. Young.
Well, well, as closing, I, I just want to let the citizens know transparency's gonna be there, my phone's gonna be available, I'm gonna show up to the meetings. You won't ever hear anybody say, "I don't know who this Fred Martinez guy is, he never shows up, and, and he never answers my phone or emails," and this and that, and, and so you won't hear that from, from people. I come in with good conservative principles that my father, Elmer Ellsworth, has taught me. He's been a great man, and, and because of that, those teachings, I have furthered my knowledge in studying the Constitution and, and those, those things that are important as a nation and as a community. Small government, limited government is, is important to have, and that's what I'll have, transparency and, and everything.
Mr. Savage.
Well, as, as I told someone yesterday, they think the county is, is really where the rubber hits the road, you could say, or if you're a farmer, you might say that's the end of the ditch. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of things going on at the federal and state level, but at the end of the day, the county is where, you know, if someone has an accident and they can't pay for their health insurance or an issue that's causing them a hardship, the county is, is usually the, the one there that's gonna help to handle those issues, and, you know, that's, that's our choice as, as a people, that, you know, that we, we pool our rights together and form governments that, that hopefully benefit the people as a whole, and, and that's definitely would be my hope as a commissioner, to be able to, to do that, to make the, the county government here in the county that works and helps all the people in the counties.
Thank you, sir.
I, except for 14 years, have lived my whole life in Jefferson County, and I love this county. I love a lot of things that are happening right now. I hope that as a county commissioner, that I will be able to be open to all the citizens' concerns. I'm very conservative in my life, and so it's gonna be very hard to talk me into raising taxes. It's gonna be, I'm all for less regulation, that's one of my biggest concerns. It's what's stifling business in our county and in Idaho and in the country, is we're over-regulated, so I'm gonna fight with everything I can to deregulate where we can, and I just appreciate this, thankful for this opportunity to be able to do this for them, so people can get to know me a little bit better, and I look forward to serving you as your county commissioner.
Thank you.
You know, this is a wonderful place to live, and that's why I know a whole lot of families in the last few years who've moved into here, into this area, and we want to keep it that way. We want to keep it a safe place, a wonderful place to raise our families and raise our kids and grandchildren. And we have three major issues. Well, of course, we have to maintain the budget, and we have to open the budget up and make it to, at the best we possibly can. But the purpose of a government is to defend the people, and the county is the last defense against the federal encroachment. Now, Ken and Richard have talked about that, but there are some major issues that are coming down to be a big fight here on the water. I mean, they're taking the land now. They're taking, they've already proposed to take all of the water, I mean, all the canals, all the irrigation waters, even the rainwater runoff is now going to be under federal control, and the one place that we can still fight that is here at the county level, maybe by joining with other counties to do that, but those are some of the issues that we see, I see coming down, and we need to have some real backbone to take care of those issues.
Roger Young, Richard Savage, Fred Martinez, and Ken Hall, all running for the third district seat for Jefferson County Commissioner. Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. We have included information about each of the candidates here on this page, as well as links to other community forums. Audience, thank you for coming out here. Again, this has been the Jefferson County Political Town Hall Meeting, featuring the commission seat number three, sponsored by Scotty's True Value. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Kirk Scott with Scotty's True Value in Rigby, Idaho. An informed voter is a good voter. We have sponsored this debate, so Jefferson County voters can be more well-informed, so please tune in.